Four.
Here.
Mr. Shiflett. Mrs. Wassick.
Here.
President Mulvena.
Here. First on the agenda is the approval of agenda items.
Move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the April 24, 2017 agenda items as presented. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of consent agenda items and that includes the meeting minutes from March 27th, the regular meeting, and the April 10th work session. A motion, please.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the April 24, 2017 consent agenda items as presented.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Go, 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 go. Okay, tonight we have reports, a president's report, which I do not have. I would hope we could just take that right off of there, but...
He just designated all the items.
Yes. Capitol Connections Report, John.
It's budget season and the Senate will be passing the school aid budget out of Full Appropriations Committee this week. And so I think we'll have a better idea of what the picture for our funding is going to look like for next year after that. And it sounds like we're expecting things to kind of go along with the governor's rec, but I haven't been able to pry much information out of my counterpart who handles education. And to be honest with you, I've been busy with the largest general fund budget, which is corrections and judiciary, so I haven't had much time to dig. And I know the House is going to take up some bills this week dealing with the substitute shortage and the possibility of letting retired teachers in critical shortage areas come back and teach without forfeiting their retirement, which I think would be outstanding because one, you get experienced teachers in the classroom, and two, I mean, they already know the subject matter and if we're short teachers, it's better than nobody. Then, in the Senate Education Committee, I'm trying to remember what's happening this week, I don't think anything, actually.
Mipser's.
Oh, Mipser's. Well, that's a big one.
And what is Miss, what is it on the teacher's retirement fund?
To be honest with you, I don't know. I missed that one. The one bill that I think that we should be paying a little bit of attention to, though, at least that's not that related, is the Public Employee Retirement Forfeiture Act. And it just, it would become, it's currently, you know, Brian stole a bunch of money.
Let's use a different example.
If I sold a bunch of money, okay?
Well, yeah, okay, if an unnamed school administrator stole a bunch of money, then as part of their sentencing, the courts could at this time mandate that they forfeit a part of their pension for whenever they may have been stealing this money for. This would make it mandatory and kind of expand its scope a little bit into including 401Ks and things like that. So you'd never, you know, technically lose the money you put in, but you could lose anything your employer put in. So that's an interesting thing and the way that it kind of is set up to fight corruption and things like that, I think it's interesting.
There's been a little bit of that going on.
It's important to note, though, that, you know, Mayor Kwame Kilpatrick was never, his pension was never seized or anything like that, or, but the principals in Detroit, though, they are going to go after theirs. But I will keep an eye on the Mipser stuff in the Senate Education Committee this week.
Now, on a different note, are they still talking about the repeal of the income tax?
Tax abatement and tax reduction and tax cuts are the goal of every hardworking legislator and regardless of whether or not it makes any sense with the rest of their fiscal policies to do so, they, you know, term limits, everybody has to cut taxes during their term in order to be a real, solid, effective legislator in their mind. And so because we rotate them every six years, they have all forgotten, you know, the promises that were made with proposal aid, they've forgotten promises that they made with the roads, even though that was only two years ago, but a third of the House has already flipped over. And so everyone comes in and they're like, well, I've got to cut the spending, I've got to cut the costs, I've got to cut the taxes, I've got to make my mark. They forget about creating a longer lasting policy, you know, concept and executing that in the same way that legislators did before term limits.
Interesting.
You know, now you pass something, you don't have to worry about it because by the time it's effective, you're gone.
Well, thank you. Governance Committee.
Linda?
Well, we've not met since the last time we reported. It does look like we have an update at your desk related to some of the strategies that Superintendent has been working on towards those goals, so right now we're just pretty much in the implementation and monitoring stage and nothing more to report on that.
Don't we have another meeting Friday? I thought we did.
We do.
Then we have another meeting Friday.
Friday, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. The Grand Ledge Education Foundation.
I do not have a report.
Okay, thank you. Grand Ledge Parks and Recreation.
Like Linda, we have not met since the last board meeting. The meeting is the third Thursday, so it's this Thursday. And our board meeting last time was after the meeting, so there hasn't been a meeting yet. You had asked about the Grand Avenue Race.
The Grand Adventure Race.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I checked up on that, that'll be September 24th, I believe.
Oh, okay.
And I was told to direct any further questions to your friend and mine, Steve Baker,
So is that on our school website now or is there on the city of Grand Ledge's website? Signups?
For Grand Adventure Race? It's, yeah, you on our website will actually see the contact now that they...
Oh.
Through their software, through their software, the name of the time race they had.
All right, thank you. I noticed, I guess the president's report tonight is the Eaton County ERESA report, which wasn't listed on here. Our former board member, Jay Bennett, sent me a note this morning. Jay Bennett, former Grand Ledge board member, an all-around great guy, has been sworn in to finish out the term vacated by Sarah Clark Pearson. "I am sure he will do a wonderful job and he would like to thank Grand Ledge and its wonderful board members for their support. There will be three openings on the board in June and Jay has expressed interest in running again for the seat." The ERESA board election will be June 5th. Superintendent Cindy Anderson will present the ERESA budget to the local boards on the May 2 countywide board meeting at the Crown Plaza Hotel at 6:00 PM. Local boards will be asked to pass supporting resolutions by June 1, 2017. ERESA is in the process of hiring on new curriculum director and early childhood supervisor. Details to come. Thank you very much, Jay.
All right. Off to a good start.
Off to a good start. Now we have public comment on non-agenda items.
There was a superintendent's report there if you wanted to...
Oh, it was, look, I booted you right out.
There's just a couple items.
We're stealing, you know?
We're so excited to hear from Eaton ERESA.
Good to hear from Eaton ERESA. Just a couple items. First of all, Delta Mills update, our asbestos abatement is completed and they're waiting on the final tests to come back in regards to air quality. We do not anticipate an issue with that, but that has to be done for it to be signed off on. Currently, they're ahead of schedule, they're projecting a completion date of mid-July, and our registrations for young four-year-olds preschool for that building are upwards of 50. So it's pretty good when the building is still pretty raw and we've got people signing up to bring their little ones for our preschool. Next, and tying into Jay's report, last week Steve Gabriel and I served on the interview panel for the next Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction at ERESA. There were several really good candidates, one that I think Steve and I looked at and said, that's the one. And they're bringing a couple back for a second round interview this week and we anticipate they'll make a decision by week's end. Finally, as Linda mentioned, the board had asked for some updates in regards to the strategic plan specifically in teaching and learning. So you've got a handout in front of you, it just identifies some of the things that we've talked about, you know, purchasing materials such as everyday math, reading curriculum, providing materials for teachers, a lot of professional development going on across the district. And I'm not going to read it all to you, but just as an update in regards to some of the great things happening in the instructional world at Grand Ledge. And I will also remind you that we'll have a year-end update coming up in June for all three areas, the strategic plan, and that'll be a year-end report or presentation so that you can kind of see where we're at in all of the goals that we have had this year. That would conclude my report.
Thank you. Now, public comment on non-agenda items. Any takers? All right, then. New business, we have a teacher leave of absence approval of, teacher leave of absence for Patrick Helmick. Oh, quit chattering, can I have a motion?
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the teacher leave of absence as presented.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Can we have a little background on that? Is he...
Very little. He's requested a leave under FMLA and certainly appropriate. He's got some family medical concerns that he's dealing with within his family and certainly something that I think we should provide him the opportunity to take a leave, which also would provide him the opportunity to come back to us at the end of next year.
Because he's been around for a while.
He has been.
Yeah. So I was kind of surprised. Okay, approval of resolution to consider designation of electoral representatives for Eaton County ERESA, June 5, 2017 biennial election. A motion?
I don't know that anybody knows what names to fill.
We need two names in there.
Oh, we want the names first, okay.
Was that John jumping up and down earlier?
That was John raising his hand wildly and begging to go, yeah.
And Linda, you offered to be the alternate?
Yes.
I must say, Sarah, I went to support Jay in being, serving the end of your term. It's a very happy place over there.
It is a very happy place. And I was going to ask you about the biennial election, if they've had any word as to whether or not the Unitas School will be, Strange School will be sending a representative to that.
I asked that question at the last SOUP's meeting and she did not know at that time.
It won't make much difference on this one, I'm pretty sure, so, no, it's a, it's a, I think, I think they've got a really functional board right now.
They do, and the interesting note that Cindy Anderson made was that now there are three people with special education backgrounds, Cindy Anderson, the superintendent, the other board member, Deb.
Deb Disbrow.
And now Jay Bennett.
Did they miss me?
I think they did. I said, I said she left because she felt that she was getting too old for this. Max Baxter says, I need to send her a note.
I left because they were getting along too well.
All right, so we have our alternates, our primary and alternate. Yeah, I need a motion.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the resolution to consider designation of John Shiflett as the Electoral Representative for the Eaton ERESA, June 5, 2017 biennial election with Linda Wassick as the alternate at its May 22, 2017 regular board meeting as presented.
This is a roll call vote? Yeah, I suppose. A second?
Sarah? It is a roll call vote. Ready?
Yep.
Mrs. DeFort?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Shiflett?
Yes.
Mrs. Wassick?
Yes.
President Mulvena?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, my, okay, new business. We have approval of payment of sinking fund invoices. Can I have a motion, please?
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools approve the payment of sinking fund invoices in the amount of $105,723.53 as presented.
Just like to note, this is for demolition and asbestos removal, correct?
All of it's Delta Mills and asbestos abatement and GMV architecture was the second bill that's being approved.
I just want to comment that normally I wouldn't vote on construction, but this is not one that involves, I think, any kind of destruction management, so I'm going to vote.
Vote on this.
Is there support?
Yeah. Who gets the support? Any second?
I support, support.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, just turf it discussion. And this is a discussion on the community stadium project.
Yes, we have Steve Baker with us tonight. I think he probably has the most recent information from our community committee that's working on restructuring or resurfacing the football field. Steve, I'll let you...
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hello.
Basically, just some... We've got Mr. Piper's here and Coach Scott Dane, if anybody doesn't know, he coaches both our boys and our girls soccer team and the community stadium. At least from my standpoint, you know, we have, we've got a stadium right now that our football team plays in, that our football team plays in it nine, maybe 10 times a year. If we're really, really good, maybe 11, if you go 12-0 and teams on the other side lose, you get to play 12 times a year. So for me, it's always been about access and for me, it's been, a big thing has been trying to help our soccer program, which plays at Bowton Field. Currently, as you all know, Bowton Field does not have any restroom facility, it does not have any team room facility for our student athletes, does not have any lighting, it does not have suitable parking, it does not have adequate bleachers, and it's not even a secure facility in terms of us when we're trying to collect our gate entry. So, and while Bowton Field has served us well for a long time, there have been improvements that have needed to be made there. And we've talked about those in the past years, at least since I've been the athletic director over seven years now, or going on seven years now. So with that, we understand that any kind of a cost to improve Bowton would be north of that $300,000 range and that would just be to get them a structure similar to what was built seven, seven and a half years ago out at the track with their restroom facility that is also shared by softball. And that's what got our discussion going about taking our biggest and our most prominent facility, our football stadium, and trying to make it a multi-purpose stadium. And the reason we have never been able to do that is simply the turf cannot withstand that many events. If we were to take our JV soccer team and our Varsity Soccer Team, both boys and girls, and move them over, we have lacrosse now, if we were to put lacrosse in that stadium, the natural grass simply could not hold up. Which is a reason where, if you look at any of the literature that you've seen with school districts that are our size, that this is something that is commonplace in southeast Michigan and in west Michigan. And in mid-Michigan, Lansing Catholic was one of the first, or was the first in mid-Michigan to get a field. So the thing that it would bring to Grand Ledge would turn a facility that is used 10 days out of the year to literally being used almost daily, with the exception of probably three months in the winter time. And that, I think, is the best way to utilize the district's facility there, instead of trying to put money into a facility at Bowton and then still not have lights, still not have proper seating, still not have adequate or paved parking. And that's where the conversation started. And where we're at now is, from a committee standpoint, is we're continuing to raise money and we continue to get the in-kind services, which have been coming along rather well. And we just had some more come in over the weekend. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about field turf. I've tried to educate myself as well as I can, I've always known a lot about it before this, but just in looking at other fields and on site visits that we've made and the surface that we've decided to go with, which is from a company called ProGrass, that is absolutely state-of-the-art and would stand up to everything that we want to put out there, including our physical education classes, including giving us the ability to host community events, which we simply couldn't do for fear of damage to our stadium grass right now, and facility rentals, being able to host potentially other sports organizations that are in the area and being able to generate some revenue that way as well, too, not just from a facility rental, but also from a concession stand rebel standpoint as well. So many opportunities for us, and I think a lot of school districts get this synthetic surface because it really is nice and it looks great. We need it for those reasons, are so secondary. For us, it is such a practical application of this surface. Grand Ledge would use this surface for all the reasons that it was invented in the first place, to make something that you can't use very much to make it multi-purpose. And instead of focusing on one group of student athletes, which is what we do right now, and our marching band, which performs on it, again, just like football, four or five nights out of the year plus their exhibition, we would open it up to community members from kindergarten, now that we operate the recreation program as well, all the way up through 12th grade. Does, I just want, if anybody has any questions about the surface, about synthetic surface, the process, I'd be happy to answer them. Or Mr. Piper and Coach Dane's here as well.
I have a question. First of all, I completely agree with everything you just said as far as access to the community and for all the right reasons, it seems right up Grand Ledge's alley. As I was doing research on this, you know, a lot of questions kept popping up that I don't know the answer to as far as this field. So we picked, we picked a company, we picked a surface, we picked, I mean, it went down to like the pound per square foot. We have all that picked out, because I was looking at, you know, you know, if it has this per square foot, it actually, you know, concussions are less, you know? Do we have all that planned out as far as, I mean, it's ready to go?
Yes, the surface that, from the site visit that we liked was at Grand Rapids Catholic Central. And it was phenomenal. It's state-of-the-art in terms of the synthetic surface technology at this point, and we feel very, very comfortable with it.
Yeah.
No, I, you know, from the economic standpoint of view, I actually have been a real fan of this idea. But there are two things that I, that hold me back, and one is that I think our community really, and it may be because they don't understand the economic benefits that this has and how it expands the access to playing fields for everyone, from the band to football to soccer, though I always thought soccer was, I was told originally that it was too narrow for a soccer field, but lacrosse and just other, other fields that need and benefit from a uniform surface that promotes safety and in this situation allows a lot more intensive use. But what I do hear from the community is that they see it as a luxury. And secondly, there is considerable concern about whether or not the granulated crumb tire material does have a cancer component. And just now, after I finished reading this, which by the way, has numbers in it, and I assumed those were footnote numbers, but I'm not seeing them footnoted anywhere.
Yeah, I can get that, I was just abbreviating it up just...
Okay, because I was trying to get your sources and I didn't see them, and I'm not doubting that you have them, it's just I'd like to see them.
Sure.
But my understanding is that the federal government at the end of 2000, well, throughout 2016 is collecting, through the Environmental Protection Agency, collecting data on this and is trying to come up with something a little more definitive for the public. I, I, I think that, I wouldn't, I guess I'll be frank about this, I don't want to jeopardize any future millage plans we have by a public who says, we have twice said we don't want fields to be turfed like this, to think that the board is not listening to them. Even if I think that economically it makes a lot of sense and would be a huge benefit to our kids, I'm not sure that I'm willing to risk that for academic benefits that any future millage might hold for us. So I'm not anti-turf, but I, I do feel that I have to hear from the taxpayers. And I guess I would like to at least take some time to see what the federal, what the federal Environmental Protection Agency is doing is kind of doing a study of studies. It's pulling them all together and it's looking at them because obviously some are not necessarily as scientifically rigorous as others. And I guess I would like, it has been a lingering concern since years ago when New York City put these in, and I've been looking at these fields, it feels like for 15 or 20 years. I know Traverse City, or I'm sorry, Boyn City, I think, put one in, was pretty happy with it.
Traverse City?
Traverse City, but I thought Boyn City did, too.
Boyn has not, no.
I picture this...
Not that I'm aware of, but...
Picture this blue turf, maybe it's just the wrong time of night.
Saint Francis.
Sagittarius has a blue turf.
Potaski just put some in as well, too.
Maybe it's Potaski I'm thinking of. Boy, I drive by it all the time, it's funny, I can't remember. But anyway, I, I think it would be worth seeing how, I'm not sure when the EPA is going to produce its results of its study, but I think it's fair to have some concern there. And I appreciate the data you've put together, I would like to see the footnotes.
Sure. You know, from the safety standpoint, it's obviously something that has been voiced to me before and I've looked into it as much as I can as well, too. I haven't found any scientific study that has supported any claims that it does pose a safety risk. I've always seen the opposite, I've always seen the scientific studies or the peer-reviewed studies supporting that it is safe. And there were just a couple other studies that have come out, one late at the end of last year and a Dutch study overseas and then one in Washington State as well. And that, that just adds to more and more that I've read about that have said that it's okay. And, but I certainly understand the concern, I share the same concern.
And I guess my thought, and I'll stop, but, you know, if the Environmental Protection Agency thinks that it needs to weigh in on it, then if every study they saw that was academically, scientifically rigorous said that, that it, that these were, you know, that the, that the potential for cancer is no greater than generally in the population, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure why the EPA would look at it. On the other hand, they also looked at electromagnetic field issues, too, and decided it was inconclusive. So, but, but I will say that, you know, for any public that's listening, that I do believe that while that, that health concern is something we should at least take seriously, I think having a uniformly level field that is, you know, does not have low spots, doesn't have hard spots, doesn't have grass that is slippery, I mean, that there's a lot of things about it that will prevent the kinds of injuries that we do have that are pretty real and day-to-day. And those can be as life-changing for kids as some of the more serious types of occasional diseases. But even though there's a rare chance of having the disease in the general population, it still has an outsized fear in the community, and I think we need to at least listen to that.
Well, in the research I did, Sarah, just, EPA did do a study in 2009 on synthetic turf. Because of the higher, more people are using it for the economic and, you know, the higher utility of those fields, they were supposed to start a study in February of this year, but since the EPA is getting cut, I don't think it'll be...
They may not be high on the... They actually were supposed to start in February of 16, but you're right, it's a very reasonable concern that they might not be able to.
But the other one, New York State, the Department of Conservation did a study, because people are concerned with the higher use, injuries, and, you know, the carcinogens and chemicals. And their conclusion said, several assessments using different approaches all had similar conclusions. Exposure to chemicals in crumb rubber is likely to be small and unlikely to increase the risk of any health effect. And that was, and you said that New York State and City had a lot of turf there.
Concern, yeah, a lot.
Is this completely different stuff than we've been using on tracks for years?
The difference, Pat, would probably be that it's where the rubber granules on the field... The difference, Pat, would probably be that it, it's where the rubber granules on, on the field are settled in the field, whereas with a track, it's compacted and they don't, they don't.
Right, they, this, this comes up when you run on it, it's like dust.
It's not much, yeah, when you run, I, I think the concern would be that is if you dive on it or you fall onto it type of thing. And from, from what the research I've seen as well, too, is that, that everything is contained in the granule. And that's one of the things that they've said is, is made it okay. There's nothing that's, that's exposed or available for anybody to ingest.
No, more than, you know, herbicides, pesticides, things like that.
Correct, you know, and, you know, and you look at how many people, organizations, universities, professional sports organizations that have millions and millions and millions of dollars tied up in there, professional athletes, go with this surface. And you see it a lot, especially when you look at the mid-major colleges that don't roll with the big dollars of, of some of the Division One schools. And you see all of the Gilead schools, 13 out of 14 have this surface. You see even the Big Ten, 10 out of 14 have this surface, including the University of Michigan in Wisconsin and Penn, no, not Penn State. Minnesota just put it in, and theirs is an open-air stadium, they just made a decision to go to the surface as well, too. Every school in the Mid-American Conference for football has this surface. It's, it's, when you look at high schools, especially in Southeast Michigan and West Michigan, and if you look at schools that are similar to our size, I'm not saying we always have to do the same thing that schools our size do, but out of the top 50 schools in the state of Michigan, 44 have this surface. And we would be one of the six that do not. And if you look at teams that qualify competitively moving, moving forward in a lot of the sports, 15 out of 16 that qualified for the semifinals in D1 and D2 last year, their school had this surface as well, too. It's something that has become very, very practical for high schools in Michigan. It just hasn't really taken on in the mid-Michigan area yet.
Well, speaking of practicality, when you talk about economic impact, I'm sure some of the other members are referring to tournaments and things like that that will bring people into the community, where I'm sure they'll eat at Cagino's and A and W, and she. But from a practicality aspect, I think, are we also talking about maintenance costs? Because we have to pay someone to mow and water and fertilize and paint.
Correct.
And so do we have kind of a number about what it costs to maintain that field every year?
I actually asked John Piper to join us tonight, he'd put some of those numbers together last week, knowing that that would be a question.
The, the cost savings is roughly about 75,000 a year. For the football field, which would then lacrosse, soccer, everybody would be over there. So the cost savings on that would be roughly.
Could we add in, I'm sorry, could we add in the cost savings of not mowing, watering, fertilizing, and painting Bowton as well?
Correct, that, yep, yep, that's, everything all included is roughly 75,000.
Okay.
So that's top dressing, seating, fertilizer, everything.
So then, so that, first of all, let me tell you, I love the idea of expanded opportunity for kids. I think that's a no-brainer. And, and I think along with the money and the purchase and the installation, we're going to have to come up with a really good scheduling function because I can see that we can easily overextend the capacity and we're making a lot of promises to a lot of people. And, you know, we need to see how that actually plays out in terms of who gets to use it when and, you know, how do we do that? But.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt because I can, I, I'll be the one scheduling. So I can, I can tell you how that's going to go. We already do it with our gyms, we already do it with our pool. And it's not very scientific for me, for our gyms. I pull our coaches that are going to use the gyms and we sit down and we figure it out and it's equitable. And I would see the exact same philosophy moving forward with the stadium. We put together drafts of what a schedule could look like in the fall and the spring based on past schedules. We're now almost finished with our, our schedule for this fall. And I was going to pull our band director, our varsity football coach, Coach Dane, which would be the three this fall that would be on it, and pull them in and say, okay, let's get to work on the schedule, let's take a look at what it would look like and show so the community could see. Because one thing I want people to understand is if you take, just take football. Football's use of that facility, even with soccer playing on it and marching band, would increase tenfold. Because right now, they're not allowed to practice in there. And the only thing we allow our football team to do is a short walk-through the day before their game. A lot of times they can't do that if we've got a sub-varsity game in there. So even football, who's already using the facility with everybody else that would want to get it in there, their usage would increase as well, too.
Okay, so, so you mentioned not taking care of Bowton Field. Is it our intention then to not take care of Bowton Field anymore then?
I don't, I don't think we would put the same effort into Bowton Field to make it a Division One quality high school facility.
So then, so then I, but I do see that, you know, over 12 to 14 years, we could expect a $300,000 replacement.
Correct.
Cost, plus you mentioned grooming, which needs to happen every 100 play hours. So I think what would make me feel better and what I think the community should be able to have as they weigh this decision, whether it was a good decision or not, is an actual spreadsheet. And I know there are unknowns that you can never predict and you can't always know for sure what somebody's going to cost. But stretch it out over 12 to 14 years and say, this is what our cost with turf would be, this is what our cost would be projected to be now. You know, and include Bowton Field if you don't think we're going to be doing that. But I can see, you know, we just create more opportunities for kids and now, okay, we need this other field because the younger kids need a place to practice and so we need, we still need to, you know, deal with those.
I would look at, I would look at Bowton the way that our Grand Ledge Youth Baseball has utilized our campus with our Hayes North Baseball Field and now the Bronco Field, which is south, that has had some improvements that, that they've helped with on that. And the same with Marsh Field, which is our property, but GLA YF manages and does an incredible job with that facility. I could see the same thing with our Grand Ledge Soccer Club, having another facility on our campus, but understanding that it's, it's a facility that, that they can take some ownership in and, and really get behind in trying to help maintain that facility similar to those other organizations.
So I, I guess if we could see in real numbers, you know, I think we're throwing around a lot of things that we're going to save a lot of money, we're going to, you know, it's about this, it's about that. But if we could really actually see, this is what our projected costs over the next 12, 14 years will be if we do nothing. This is what, or nothing different than what we're doing now. And this is what our costs would be over the next 12, 14 years. Because $300,000 is a good chunk of change, we're still going to have to budget for that every year to get ready for that.
Yes.
Yeah, but also in that cost savings, I mean, do we really not see in 12 or 14 years having bathrooms at Bowton? And, you know, a team room and all that, I mean, that, that could be part of the cost savings as well.
Sure, sure, that's fine, that's fair, yeah.
Right, it's just, there's so many things that, you know, this would, you know, help with as far as the, the quality of other sports using it.
And that's one of the things that I, I would like, you know, to keep the focus on as much as I can. Are, and I'm not just saying this because our soccer coach back here, he understands where I'm coming from on it. What our soccer program goes through by not having a facility that is where it needs to be. And also understanding the commitment it would take from either a fundraising effort or from the district to bring it up and it still wouldn't be. Just, just with, if we added that restroom facility at that large number of $300,000 approximately, we would still have a plethora of issues at Bowton that we would have to take care of and figure out. And the opportunity to take the facility that we have, that our community loves and, and loves going to games there, the neighborhood field that we have, and be able to have that feeling and have so many other kids be able to experience playing in that stadium that many more times. It, to me, it's just, it's, it is the option when it comes to our soccer program, to put them in a situation, to get them in a facility that those student athletes deserve.
You know what, right now, what is the turf condition at the football field, is that clay?
It's, it's natural grass, it's a.
No, is it, is the dirt, is it clay or is it dirt?
Um, yeah, it's a, it's a little bit of a mix. We've, and I will tell you, we put a lot of time in, I shouldn't say we, you know, John's guys have put a lot of time and effort and we've committed to that and, and getting that turf back.
Well, I know, that's my point, because I know we have clay in our backyard and you need a pickaxe to plant anything in there. And it dries out super quick all the time, especially in the hot weather in the summer, so you have to water it all the time.
Yeah.
Where does Lacrosse currently play their games?
They're in the stadium right now.
In the football stadium?
Yep.
Okay, so this would.
This is the first year, though, where, where were they before this year?
They played at Marsh Field.
Okay, all right. And then I just wanted to say, you know, I want to make sure, people have been concerned about slipping on the turf fields and injuries. But from what I can find, it seems to have more bounce, so the injuries are far less. But is it slippery if it's a rainy night or something like that or cold?
I, I think the footing on it is actually better. Because if you get out, you could ask our marching band on the exhibition when those storms rolled through and what the footing was like out there, and that simply would not have happened on a synthetic surface. And, and again, I think one of the advantages that we have with Grand Ledge, and we're not late to the game getting in this, but looking at it at this time, is we can look at so many high schools, colleges, professional sports teams that have already gone to this type of surface, the exact same surface that we're looking at putting in, and the success that they've had with it. And they're our case studies, that's who we can look at. And when we see colleges come to the end of their life term, just like Ferris State did, and go back to that same surface. You know, that says a lot that they feel comfortable with that for their students.
I want to point out, when, when they talk about going back to that surface, I, I could be misunderstanding it, but there's a, an initial cost to lay the groundwork underneath, which is part of the reason it's less slippery, I think, is because you have an underlay of, an underlayment of sand and filtration. It pulls the moisture away from it. So they don't have pooling, you don't have.
All drains away.
All those other things that keep the, the field, field wet. And when the, it's sort of like when the carpet wears out, you don't have to rip out the underlayment on the floor. And I think that generally, although I'm not totally certain of it, that the cost of, when you talk about replacement, it's not the level of replacement that it is to build the initial surface, right?
Right, your sub-base pretty much stays the same. You're just replacing the actual synthetic portion.
And do you know the annual maintenance cost on a turf, synthetic turf field? There's got to be some cost associated with it.
There's not much. When you look at the, when you look at the grooming, you know, and John and I have talked about this, you get a, a piece of equipment that you can use with a gator or even a golf cart that they recommend goes over the field every 100 hours of, of use, game use. Not necessarily practice use, but game use is their recommendation. And when I've talked with other athletic directors across the state, they, they, it is just minimal in terms of what they have to do to that field. Sometimes with that groomer, it just, it, it redisperses things so things stay where they're supposed to be with the granules. And it's a, it's a rubber sand mix is what we would be looking at, a 70/30, so there would be sand in there as well, too. But it is, it's minimal. So you would be looking at essentially mowing the field once every 100 hours of use from that standpoint.
Which would be about the difference of what we do it roughly once for every hour of use on average, I would think, since.
Oh, gosh.
We mow it pretty continuously, even.
That'd be a great stat we should come up with, yeah.
I mean, because you're mowing in the offseason as well.
Oh, my gosh, three, three days a week.
So we mow every, for every 10 minutes of play? Might be.
And that, that's, that's why it's, it's, you know, it's just so appealing for a school district like Grand Ledge because we, we've got the need for the multi-purpose. And, you know, when I look at it even from now, I have a, put the recreation hat on, we would be out there every Saturday and Sunday with kids in our community, getting to go into that stadium and play in that stadium. And again, concession stand opportunities and just, just more people coming into, into our town, the opportunity for Michigan High School Athletic Association tournaments. The one thing that, that the MHSAA, they will not put football semifinals or finals on grass anymore. They just won't do it because they want to have that safe, consistent surface, especially for a game of that magnitude, which is why you saw us go to Brighton, even though we didn't get a safe, consistent surface because they had 13 inches of snow. But, but that's, that's the, that's the thing for me. It just seems, it seems for Grand Ledge, it's, it's, it's what this community needs right now. And I think you're right, it has been looked at as a luxury in the past. But for our district and the needs that we have, it, it, it doesn't seem like a luxury. It seems almost like something that is cost-effective for us to do it because we can take care of so many other costs that we would have down the road. At some point, we're going to have to figure out what to do for our soccer program at Bowton. And we've been, you know, we tried, you know, in the last bond question and we're very hopeful with that. And at some point, we've got to either get after that facility at Bowton, but it seems like to me, in my estimation, that that would not be money well-spent when we could give them a better facility and then help so many other students as well.
Well, you know, I think it's, I, I would love to see a multi-purpose community because it's already got lights, it's already got bleachers, it's already has the bathrooms, the team rooms, the concessions. And every time you build another facility like Bowton Field, the cost of that alone, we looked at that several years ago, was $350,000 to have just team rooms and bathrooms and some concessions. Electricity and water and.
Right, and that was just one team room, that still wasn't a team room for our visiting team.
Yeah, so you have all those things accessible at the football field and, and you have the parking. And it's not just Bowton Field, it's any field, the future development of any field, all those are components of doing that, so. But, but as Linda mentioned, I would like to see some kind of spreadsheet with real numbers about, you know, we know, John said, about 75,000 a year to maintain the football field and that's just the, the, the grass, nothing else.
Painting, grass, watering, fertilizer.
Fertilizer.
Yeah, but that's, those are all included in.
Right, labor.
But it's not like cleaning the bleachers or, you know, it's not cutting Bowton Field or anything, just that field. And if you have nine football games there a year, I mean, I, I was looking at the, it's like $8,000 a game. No to play at the football field when you're looking at the cost to maintain it. So, because they only play a couple of times a year.
We're very.
Steve, you?
We're very unique at Grand Ledge with having a football-only stadium. A lot of communities, at the very least, will have a track surrounding their football stadium. And we don't have that, so it, it truly is just a football stadium. And a marching band, you won't want to forget about marching band, they're out there as well on those same, not, not all nine days, but four or five of them.
Steve, you, you jumped in and are leading a hand in facilitating this, but this didn't start with the school district, didn't start with our athletic department. Do you want to give some background in regards to where this actually came from?
Sure.
How we got to where we are today?
Yeah, it, it came from, it came from parents that approached us and wanted to help and wanted to figure out how can we make this happen in this community. And from that standpoint, we've kind of taken it and ran with it and said, okay, let's see if the community will support something like this. And we're, we're on our way, we're on our way. And we're, we're seeing that support and we hope to continue to see that support.
And that's the thing, I, I mean, just like a couple of the playgrounds, which, you know, we all think are wonderful things, but we haven't been able to, to really swing it with the millage. If you have private donations that get us a long way there, then it's really a community partnership. And, you know, I, I mean, I want to make it clear that while I think there were concerns of the voters, there, there's never been a question on this board and any of the makeup of this board that, that economically it was, that we would recover the cost of it in a really short time, at the same time vastly expanding the opportunities for our kids and really anyone in our community. So that wasn't the issue. But maybe it is just that because it is something sort of new and looks sort of fancy and it's something that, you know, started out with colleges and New York City and that, that it has sort of the connotation of being a luxury. But, but it does make economic sense and I, I don't think any of us question that. And I deeply appreciate that, that there's a private partnership of community members who are coming together and trying to get this off the ground.
What's the total goal?
Total goal is 650,000. The project is going to come in that 600, 600, $10,000 range, but we've got a donation wall that's, that's part of the, the budget as well, too, to honor those that have given.
Mr. Piper, now if the community does put this in, I would just like to throw my name out as maybe someone who could be on the list of volunteers who are willing to donate their time to drive around this golf cart with the thing on the back. I have a very small yard.
Scratch that.
That I've been, you know, filling up with garden beds anyway. So I don't really get the opportunity to do this sort of work.
You looking for a beverage holder in that cart?
I will provide my own beverage holder.
I'd be more happy to take it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, we second.
Steve, where are we at with the funds raised so far?
We're over halfway.
Okay.
We're over halfway. And that's based on that in six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We just had, we had a pretty good weekend. I think we had another, just over, what was it? Almost eight thousand come in over the weekend, so.
Is that in cash or is that in?
That was cash this weekend.
Those are not just pledges, there are actual cash in hand?
Cash, yeah.
And I know you got Coach Dane with you. I know we had a couple of the coaches that couldn't make it on short notice. I don't know if, Coach, if you want to say anything or talk about it at all or?
Uh, sure, I mean, I, I think for us in the soccer program, in a perfect world, we'd love to be at Bowton on a beautiful grass field that's with bleachers and lights and, I mean, that'd be perfect, right? And, but that's not the reality of where we're at and the field's suffering. I mean, you know, John puts time in and we know every time he clips the field, you know, our clippings and we know it's being cared for, but it's more than just maintenance, I think, to make our playing surface nice. And the playing surface is suffering pretty badly over there. And I think the bigger part for me is the, the facilities when we have guests. We have opposing teams that come. Rockford was here a week and a half ago and the girls wanted to know where to change. I put, I put some girls, I put, I think it was the Williamson Girls, some of the Williamson Girls changed in our press box because that's where I could put them where they'd be, where there was coverage. It's, it's, it's hard for me and frankly embarrassing sometimes to not have facilities for players to change, especially Rockford, an hour and a half bus ride, to change into their uniforms. So that, that makes it difficult. And I think the bathroom situation for our players, I kind of say, hey, you're a player, deal with it. I don't want to ever say that to fans or grandma or anyone else. We've had fans drive to McDonald's to use the restroom because they won't use our portages that are there. So it's, it's hard for us as a program that we're trying to be on the big scale of soccer and trying to compete. I think we've had some real, some high success in the last few years on the field. Off the field, academically, we succeed really well as, too, and then to have a facility that sometimes we're embarrassed to showcase. So in a perfect world, we'd love to stay at Bowton and have this beautiful million-dollar field, but we, we also understand that's not a reality. And we, we want to be team players and all this. And this solves, the community stadium would solve parking, lights, uh,
Team rooms.
Team rooms, bathrooms, concessions. We don't, we run a very small concession. We run candy and Gatorades is our concession right now. Uh, we, we would like to run more. And I was just at the baseball game in between practice and coming over here and the amount of revenue that I think baseball is generating on concessions that we miss out on. Um, we flat out miss out on and it's things that we want that we don't have. The playing surface itself, I think any soccer coach would ever tell you that we all want to play on a grass, a perfect grass surface every game. But we go west and play our districts, our districts are in the west and it is a challenge every year, the first game we play on turf, even if we go and practice on turf, it is a, it's a game changer and it's hard. And we had a really good team this year. We, we lost one game in the regular season and we went over to Caldonia and we, we put in our worst performance of the year in the first half. We, we escaped in penalties, but it took us a half to get into playing and we had a team that was probably good enough to really compete and it, we don't want to make excuses ever, but we played, then we played Rockford on it, on turf at East Kentwood, we were exhausted. We, we were toast and we nearly pulled that upset. But then we would have had to play two days later on turf again against East Kentwood. It's hard, it's hard for us. So the stadium, I think, helps solve a lot of our challenges that we have. We'd like to still see Bowton maintained. All of our league games, the way league games would be on grass at this point right now. So if we're playing Okemis the next day, we'd like to practice on grass the day before, of course. But I actually think that gives us a real advantage, that we would have the opportunity to play, to practice on grass if we're going to play a grass opponent or practice on turf if we're going to play a turf opponent. I think it really gives us a, the opportunity to have an advantage in that sense. And then I think the final piece for us is Steve and I, Steve works, Steve's really accommodating with this. I, when we're in our league cup games in the fall, we, if we're, we were the top seed this past fall and we were the host for our games, which meant a four P M varsity game, which is just because we don't have lights and we have to get it in. And it's, uh, it's a struggle to play, it seems crazy to me to play a top game at four P M. We were, we were the best team in the, in the area this year and we were playing four P M varsity games. Steve helps, we play, I think we played at three-thirty a JV game so that we could play the varsity game at five, so at least we could have a crowd and we could accommodate our fans and parents, accommodate, and this year maybe for the first time ever, actually accommodate the media as well. And Steve helps with that and he was great in convincing other teams that, yeah, we could still start at five o'clock, but if we had the stadium, we, you know, we'd play later. We may even host the final, which we don't have the opportunity to do right now. We played in the final in two thousand fifteen in the cup final in, in Holt, which was great, really huge support, which was awesome, but when the, I mean, how awesome would it have been if we'd have hosted?
Yeah.
Right. And we've, we've already been told the second we have it, that we will host it.
And what I've always understood, too, even, even if you wanted to improve Bowton Field, you're never going to get lights there because the people in the neighborhood don't want lights.
Yeah, it'd be a chance maybe.
No.
That's a, that's a PR battle maybe that isn't worth undertaking.
Right, right.
You know, the other thing that, that you talk about, too, is if they have them on campus, right, you know, any challenge, any severe weather, you know, we're, we're going to go put them in a hole, which is, is this one, hole, because they're still good there a month, so they're at that time. And to have our kids on campus, be able to walk across the parking lot, you know, if you're a varsity, if you're a game and you forgot something, just run back to school, just the, the feeling that, that that's your home field, that it's right there. You know, Bowton's, Bowton's off-campus a little bit for us.
Yeah.
Are there any, any other questions from the board? Denise, anything?
It's a good discussion.
Yeah?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming.
And don't, don't hesitate to contact me if you, any questions arise, give me a call or shoot me an email, be happy to help answer.
And for our community's sake, I do want to remind the community that we won't be discussing this for yet another month again because we don't have a, we don't have a workshop meeting in May. So it's easy to communicate with the board. You go on our webpage, you hit Board of Education, there's a link below that has a little letter and you click on that and you can ask questions of the board, give your support, give your concerns. And you can always watch this, the discussion on YouTube in a couple of days. We've got a link on our website as well, board meetings. Yeah.
And while we're
So I'd like to hear from the community on this.
While we're publicizing, if I could let them know that our website is GLCommunityStadium.com and that you can figure out how to help, donate on that website.
Say it again, GLCommunityStadium.com. So I want to make it clear that you can find it.
And donations, donations are tax deductible.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's a 501(c)(3).
Yep. I want a brick.
What level was that?
Sold.
I want to donate to get the brick. Right, thank you so much for your time tonight.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, we have another opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, any comments from the board, cabinet members?
I will jump in and just recognize all of the community groups that do really work hard to support the district. Just in the past year, we had Friends of Acousta jump in, raised about a hundred and fifty thousand, maybe a little more, to build the Dream Depot 2.0. We had our, our baseball, and I just forgot the name of it.
Retaining wall.
Bullpen Club, thank you, who raised about thirty-five thousand for the retaining wall project that we had to do at the high school and that turned out fantastic. And now we've got a community group that's raised about three-hundred thousand dollars in order to make this a reality as well. And, and each of those projects would have been very difficult for the district to do on their own, but with the community stepping forward, saying, let us lend a hand, it's something that we can have a great partnership and accomplish a lot.
Yeah. I'd just like to say, I, I appreciate having the information. I've had a lot of questions and several of them have already been answered just from glancing through this. And I think that's good for us to know that we do need to, to be prepared to talk to community at large and, and make sure that we have a good baseline of information ourselves to address it. So thank you.
Any members from the cabinet have any comments? No? No? Everyone's all mum tonight, okay. Future, our future topics, like we mentioned earlier, we have countywide school board meeting on Tuesday, May second at six P M at the Crown Plaza. And I believe they'll be presenting their budget to all the constituent districts. And the board bond advisory meeting will be Monday, May twenty-second at five-thirty and our regular meeting will be on the same day at six.